...to the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own name.
At this time, we will have comments from our department heads and our village administrator. Patient Jackson?
Item number two, E., that's a request for a transfer for a reference unit. The person is dead, so we need a reference unit in the police department.
Is that all you're thinking?
Yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Chairman, Ellen?
Good evening, ma'am, how are you? I have nothing on agenda tonight, I just wanted to bring the board up to speed. I received a phone call from DRS, which is digital scanning, yesterday, and they are scheduled to date to pick up these third phase of the project and drop off the 400 boxes they took in phase two.
Okay, and that's moving along as you expected, too?
Yes, as scheduled.
Okay.
Yes.
Would you actually move those boxes when they come out?
Good question.
Or create this garage?
Right now, it's all into the garage right outside here.
I thought you mentioned the water building at one time.
They're in there, too, and firehouse, too. Yes.
There's a whole bunch of them, firehouse, too.
Yes.
But otherwise, you're pleased with the project?
Yes, yeah, so far.
Things are going the way and that the money is there and things going well?
Yes, everything's going smooth according to schedule, yes, and everything is fine.
Mayor, before the old records can be destroyed, every review has to be done on site by our personnel that the old records and the records are, they don't do 100%, they do some spot checking through the boxes before we can say we have what we need to throw them away.
Ralph, have we done any check? Has that started?
We started the process, we started the process, we are checking boxes right now. With short staff, I have a couple of interns right now going through each box, and they are checking out. So as soon as we go through a certain percentage, then we're allowed to destroy fire.
Thank you.
Chief Strisco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. First one is my own fire technology. We'd like to renew our contract with them for another year to provide vital fire prevention inspection services to the village. This'll be our fourth year, I believe, we have them working for us. And then we have the ladder truck, change order for ladder truck 147. Ladder truck was delivered to a local dealer here in the U.I. Park about two weeks ago, and is in the process of getting some final equipment mounted in the compartments and some graphic lettering. We've gone through all the operations of the aerial and pumper, and tested all of their functions with no issues to report. However, there's some additional number of required change orders that were made once the ladder truck went to production, and we're seeking for the change order for that for $29,000, $244.31. And we're also looking to upgrade the mobile data terminal that's in the old truck that we can't use anymore to an iPad-type device, and the iPad device is new to us, and we're going to require one-time sulfur upgrading of the 568.
A little more meat on the bone on this. So we bought a truck, built a truck, moved that to Louisiana and visited a truck.
Yes.
And somewhere in this process, in the last two months, we decided we can get to spend another 75 grand.
I don't think that's entirely out of...
No, I know, I know, I know. That's why I asked for a little more meat on the bone.
Yeah.
And again, I don't have a problem with it, I just want to make sure we have a better process.
Why don't we go some of the things, the safety things that were added and changes to upgrade the equipment?
Well, some of the bigger things, one of the major things was, first of all, 75,000, let's reduce to a lower than 49,000, okay? Some of the major things that were changed was the, it has several, it's a pumper and a ladder truck. So it has a pump panel, and there's multiple discharges on that pump panel. After construction or after pre-construction, to bring one into assembly, and newer versions of these gauges and operators became available. The newer version is easier and faster to operate with one-touch type preset buttons, allowing us to get hose line operation and putting water on the fire faster, and it also requires less maintenance. We thought at the time it was a prudent investment to enhance the patrol panel, because we're going to have this truck for 20, 25 years.
You're talking about going through 2044, right?
The other item was a re-mounted forward-facing camera. Camera was added to the system and upgraded the video system to the top of the aerial, and it points towards the front of the truck. It just allowed the chauffeur to ensure that it wasn't on top of a ladder truck while they're in the firehouse, while pulling out of the firehouse bay, also preventing looking out for low-lined branches as responding to a call. A chauffeur in a neighboring fire department pulled the fire truck out of the firehouse, not knowing there was a firefighter on top of the rig and in the ladder, and was killed. A camera like this would help avoid that tragedy. Another item was, you know, it's a pumper as well, it has a pump controller, and we realized during production that was significantly different than the existing pump controls we have in other rigs. So we made an upgrade to standardize the pump controller to make it familiar with other rigs, so there wouldn't be any differences. The other item was a thermal imaging camera. We didn't have that in the original bay, it was an extra operating account, and it was decided to move into the truck account. The thermal imaging camera detects heat signatures, it finds the fire, helps us find the fire and the water faster, and also can determine signatures of victims trapped in fire and speeds up the task of rescue. Another item was the rear suction. The rig didn't have a rear suction on it in the beginning, and it was determined that on some of the narrow streets in Garden City, it would be difficult to hook up a five-inch fetal line, spy line, to the side of the rig. So we decided to put a rear suction, so that it'd be easier to hook up to the fire truck. Those are some of the big changes that...
Yeah, again, I don't have a problem with any of it, I just want to make sure we have a good process.
That's fair enough.
I don't think financing or this stuff is being processed until we get the bill at the end of the day. So that's all, I just, just better process.
And we've, Ralph has instituted some changes to the village as a whole, and the chief and I, as well as the other chiefs, have had discussions that this isn't happening yet.
Yeah, again, it just happens to be you guys, it might goes to all of us, so just better process, that's all.
That sounds like good decision-making to me.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
All right, Mrs. Booth.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the agenda, we have four bond resolutions for DPDW projects, and these are projects that were approved and adopted in the 2019-20 budget. The reason we put these bond resolutions now is to allow the period of progressive referendum and the sample period to start, so that, you know, starting this year in June, these projects can, you know, just for DeFrancisco, can hit the ground running on these projects. These are various projects for the roads and paving, curb sidewalks, the roof replacement of the DPDW door holding, and purchases of the equipment. And also on the agenda, we have other various transfers needed for mostly DPDW area, and the commissioners spoke about the police department transfer.
Okay, does this include, if we're going to do Stewart Field, is that... How are we going to pay for that, assuming it was 100,000 or 150, are we doing that operational or by?
The board authorized $200,000 for the Stewart Field parking area sometime in the, I'll say, August, September timeframe, I'm not sure the exact date.
Right.
I believe, I'm not sure what was processed, that was surplus?
Yes, that was taken over, so...
So the funding's in place already.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, should we just add it to one of these?
Yes, right, that was already processed.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Iver.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items on the agenda this evening. The first one is number five. We had a change order at the renovation community park field number two. We had some areas that are adjacent to the field that had been spec'd to be seeded. I made an observation that it would not have been a good situation. It's still been all dirt and open bare ground right now, so we went in and headed sod it. That's what that item was, that work had to be approved prior to this meeting. The other one is an award due for tree shrubs and mulch that we purchase each year for various beautification projects throughout the village, as well as our legacy tree adventure program.
And considering that's slated for any railroad station, I know we talked about beautification.
Yes, these are general items that can be purchased, you know, as required, as needed. So anything that's designed, you know, small projects like that, this is where we come in.
The other thing is, I would probably suggest we should accord you, Mr. DeFrancisco, to utilize some of the money that was set aside by the Belgrade, potentially to...
Yes, sir. Perfect.
Mr. DeFrancisco.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three big items on the agenda tonight, I have almost eight, nine, and 10. All three of these are requests, two of them, item number eight and number nine, are for the water department. They are requests for authorization for two new projects, two new capital projects, and also requests for authorization for funding for these projects. The first one is for LED lighting for the water department's garage and storage and vehicle bays. The lighting there is woefully inadequate and needs upgrading. We've gotten pricing, and we're prepared to move forward with this project if it is approved. Item number nine is for pressure control modification, basically a variable-speed drive at well number 12B. A driver of this sort helps us vary the speed of the motors and the pumps that run the system. Right now, if a pump is on, it's on, if it's off, it's off, so we've been struggling to balance the pressure in the system since the tank has come offline. Putting these variable-speed drives in there will give us better control of the system, enabled us to vary the speed of the motor in order to control the pressure better in the water system throughout the village. There is a variable-speed drive system in, at this site now that's antiquated and is not functioning, so this would be replacing the existing system that's there. And lastly, item number 10, the heater at the, the main heating system at the garage, truck garage at the yard, failed at the end of the, luckily, at the end of the winter. And we do have, do favorable funding from our equipment budget line. Last year, we do have funds available in the equipment, capital equipment line to fund a new replacement heater for the garage.
Very good.
So, I understand you say favorable, but really what that does is take out of our surplus for coming year, because we didn't think we were going to spend it. I don't have a problem with it, but...
That's not, this is a capital project, so this funding rolls over to the next year. That's not part of our surplus, that would just be something to be more...
Oh, because the original was a capital?
Was a capital.
Yeah, capital. Okay, thank you.
All right, do the trustees have any comments or questions at this time?
On item 12, Delphi's requesting fireworks. It would just ask that they let the residents around the area make more of an effort to notify the residents about this when they come in through here around, can they describe?
That's an issue that we also encountered in the sort of centennial celebration that will happen on May 25th and begin at about 4:00 P.M. Should we, I think that we should, write a letter, compose a letter and send it to all of the neighbors on the periphery so that they're not surprised and so that they understand. The fireworks for that will not be on the fields of St. Paul's. The people attending that event will, but our fireworks for that event will take place on the fields of the middle school. They were good enough to work with us, and we were able to work that out. So that's a very good feeling on my part, and I assume on the rest of you, that we will have everybody standing who are enjoying the fireworks over at St. Paul's, and they can clearly see it with the fireworks themselves going over the middle school. So we're really very pleased about that. Fireworks are very expensive, I don't know if you know that. I think for 15 minutes of fireworks, and they're a very, very good brand of fireworks, and they have school lights and toilets and so forth, for 15 minutes, it's about $15,000. And this is an extraordinary moment in the history of our village. We are celebrating a 150 as usual and a 100, and we do want to make a gala, a festival of it. I think it's worth it, and other things where we were able to get, on the other hand, at very good prices. But it's just an interesting thing that I really think we need to notify the parent of the families around the peripheries of those fields, so that they have, they're good, you know, calm with it, and they understand what's going on.
Why don't we make Delphi do the same thing, just in a proper way around Delphi?
Just on that point, I live in that area, they do notify us. They come around and have fires when we need to see.
There seemed to be a bunch of complaints from residents last year, so...
We're watching the streets.
It's just something that they can make more of an effort to get to where now.
They need to fire several days in advance, so we know about it.
Great.
The other thing I'd like to say, going back to that topic of the festive celebration on May 25th. 26 is the rain date, is that we are going to use food trucks. Now, that might sound a little commie, islandish to you, but I have to tell you that if we get four or five food trucks, they're very involved right now, by the way, Shake Shack has food trucks. And that takes all of that with us, all the concerns about food and serving and so forth. And actually, the people who attend the celebration will just walk over to food trucks. There's all different kinds of foods. It starts with steaks, hot dogs, hamburgers, then we have empanadas and so forth. But that's, this is transaction completely between the guest and the fellow who has the food truck. We do not have to be involved in it, and we do not have to incur any expenses on that. So I thought we were very, very pleased when we found out that that would work that way for us. All right, now at this moment, we are going to invite, are there any further questions? Yes?
Technology, our chief general, right?
Yes.
The bathroom, who wants to take a shot?
So, I guess he'll be a guest.
Only the judges, these two, their heads.
Can we move Trustee Donnie's seat, please? So the, as you know, we've been monitoring the St. Paul's bathroom, the conference stations, every day. And as we noticed, and we pointed them out to not only the people inside working, but also to Cameron Engineer, who is overseeing the project. We've been constantly contacting them on, I believe it was Friday or Thursday, Friday, Kevin?
Yeah.
On Friday, they did an inspection, the engineer went down, they were doing the final inspection. I was not present at that, I purposely stayed away, I've been there plenty to see, I made my notes to her. The idea was to see if the tiles drained well, if the floor was wet, and to look for punch list items. There were 29 punch list items put together. The 30th item, though, was the unsatisfactory laying of the tiles, both on the wall and floors, pooling, discoloration, sharp edges on the floor. So we wrote a letter today, she wrote a letter for us, which was seen by both council. We all reviewed it, basically telling the contractor, the general contractor, we are not in acceptance of this job, and we want all the tiles removed and replaced. So we, in our response today, it was just on today. We anticipate that we have a bond that allows to move ahead to the contractor issues, do the work, we can hire someone else. The, what's the actual bond name?
Performance.
Performance bond, I'm sorry. We have a performance bond in place, we need to hire a subcontractor to finish the job. So we're in Delphi place right now. We're also, since we're asking for tiles removed, looking to replace it with a larger tile at this time. And there were other items, I won't go into the 20, but punch list items were significant, though.
Peter, did we ask to have that done on a specific timeframe? Do they have, does the contractor have to do it on a specific timeframe? They're not sitting here and telling us, I can't get it done until next October?
The initial step was simply to have Cameron inspect and determine what was wrong with the work. At this point in time, I think the next step is to wait for the contractor to come back and give his response. Is he going to do the job over, is he going to contest it? I think at this point, the ball is in their court.
The contract has 60 days from the date to proceed, which is somewhere around, somewhere around April 4th, 5th. So they were late in delivery as it was, and I don't know where it came from.
I would just say, let's not wait too long before kicking into the performance bond and backcharging them.
We have not...
What date you have in mind?
Actually, we had an invoice that was given to me last week. I signed it and put it aside, I let R.D. know that I was not sending the invoice. I let the Cameron Engineering person know I was not sending the invoice. And I considered releasing part of it if they were playing ball with us and doing the right thing.
No, there's no money.
No, no, that was last week, after the inspection, it's still on my desk, and it's not going anywhere.
There's no reason to pay them at all.
Right.
And there's no real reason to, like, sit around for a whole long time getting letters, yeah? Maybe we'll do this, but not this, and you're changing the tile spec, you want it bigger, and that's different than what we agreed on, so maybe do what was money, all that's BS. Just go with somebody else. I mean, how hard is it to tile a bathroom, guys?
They have it.
Jesus, I think I can do it myself, I can't leave him out, I'll do it myself.
They actually have it.
That's unacceptable, and we just shouldn't lollygag around looking for some rectification, it's never good.
I think we probably have to wait, we probably have to wait 24 hours, we have to respond 40 hours, I would say, but I'll talk to council about what you say.
I'd wait the minimum.
We have to wait a reasonable period of time.
Yeah.
And we don't want to be who fall in and get it done.
Anytime we're not using the bathroom, so, oh, we have party, we're not going to use the bathroom, we don't want nothing, we don't want the public impacted by the bathroom.
And so these will be in place, I'm assuming, during the celebration of the bathroom?
Oh, yeah, of the celebrations.
Well, for the celebration that the mayor saw on the 25th, we were actually ready.
Oh, yes.
Because these large gatherings, we're putting up a large bathroom sign, this type you see at fancy weddings, where you have multiple bathrooms on, not party parties, it'll be similar, a trailer type thing.
That evening also, we're going to get a stage, because in case we can't do the town project, we'll have to...
It's, there's this two and three available, for the Town of North Hempstead, Hempstead, or Town...
Oh, Town of Hempstead, thanks. And they're terrific, because you open them up, and they have all, like, colored lights, and you lift them up there, the orchestra or whatever up there, and it just makes it seem like you're having a very great experience and a good time. So we're looking forward to having that. Are there any? Yes?
I have something, just on a different note. On April 17th, I attended the American Legion Board Order Night, and a fireman and a police officer got the Community Service Award this year, Dan Robber from the fire department, and Steve Romelioz from the police department. I just want to congratulate them, good work, guys. On another note, identity theft is kind of big all around. I detected a state, pretty notable arrest, Detective Madden, maybe, Kelsey, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yes, Kelsey, for the last few months, we've been investigating several different scams going on with people's identity being stolen, mostly residents of the village. It was very extensive. While we were working on an unrelated case, one of our detectives came up with some information regarding some of the residents that we knew, and it started a new investigation. And it was very elaborate. These individuals were able to get credit information of numerous residents, also some local center residents, and they then obtained fraudulent licenses, and then they opened up credit cards. What they do, they go through my Quick Hits, they go open up a credit card at a store, and they do a couple quick buys, and then they go on and on, and that's what they do. Quite elaborate, quite extensive, and a lot of money. The officers worked really hard on it, took a few warrants and a few other things. Might have arrested three individuals, over 30 felony charges. Really, they actually did a lot of work with accounting on this one, too, because they're not just hitting the residents of Garden City, they're also hitting residents of county, so really did a great job. And, well, I always say, when you do one investigation, keep your eyes open for all the things that are happening, and that's what the detective did, and he stepped on a verbal online and was able to take care of it. So, again, the detective unit did a great job on this case.
You mentioned, that was Detective Madden and...
Yeah, Detective Madden, Detective Sergeant Grimes, and Detective Rothman. But Detective Madden was the one who found the discrepancy.
Please, thank them, good work. Who else, sir?
Detective Madden is an incredible person in our police department. He has solved many complex crimes. He works with the New York County Police in conjunction with them, with the Hempstead Police, the New York City Police, and has solved, he solved the crime of someone in Garden City postal office was taking credit cards, I guess it was, out of envelopes there, and they couldn't figure out what was going on. He solved the whole thing, and of course, with other police involved also, but we're particularly proud of him. He's been honored by the Town of Hempstead, at least twice, I was there to see him honored. He's extraordinary, and he's very, very good at technology, and it's effective. So we really, and he's very humble about it, too, by the way, I must say.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, are there...
Couple more? We put in the budget $700,000, $800,000 for parking lot, Nassau Boulevard. Their track is rolling along. We are going to try to get reimbursement, we've got to get moving on getting bids out of section. So what can we do, or should we do, to get this moving?
So, Trustee Donnie, the engineering department is working, and they're working very hard to put a bid spec together and put plans together on what to do with the parking lot. I think we're close to being able to put a bid spec out soon on what we do, want to do with the lot. So that's where we stand.
Three options?
Well, I think the issue is going to be the condition of the bricks when they're removed. We don't expect, we're going to try to salvage as much as we can, but we don't anticipate having very many viable bricks to work with. So I think a lot of it's going to depend on the demolition work and what we can salvage from the, from the lot right now.
But why wouldn't we just put out a proposal with three options? One, we use brick? Two, new brick or other material? Or three, asphalt?
Well, that's, that is the plan, to do that. Yes, it's different.
I was saying, just direct what asphalt, you can use stamped asphalt, right? They can color it, color it to make it look...
Yes, actually, one of the, the better plans that I heard, actually, from Deputy Superintendent Sanco... Yes, actually, one of the better plans that I heard, actually, from Deputy Superintendent Sanco, had a suggestion of taking the old bricks that come out that are stable, and instead of painting lines in the lot, use those as the lines for the lot. It was a good idea to reuse for some of the old bricks. You can use them as an accent, as a border. You know, again, it's going to depend on what we can reclaim going forward. So, if not, it's probably just going to be standard asphalt with lines, just like other lots.
Maybe we could, I had a lot of you calling about this. They're feeling sentimental about the lot, the bricks in that lot, and that does happen. So, that, we have to be practical and realistic, but if we could do something with some of the old bricks, it might be.
Absolutely, like I said, we'll try to salvage, we'll attack.
Yeah, we need, yeah, we need a good lot there that will take the beating that it gets, and we will appreciate and understand that, but maybe just, we could just do something with some of the old bricks.
Absolutely, if it was stamped asphalt that looks like bricks, right? Then you kind of get that same feel a bit, but it's lower maintenance, and you would have to pay them, right? At the end of the day, the bricks, it's a high traffic area, and the bricks are not, probably not made to withstand that much.
Okay, you are, I think, I think the issue is really to judge what, how many bricks can be salvaged? And then that's going to weigh in on the decision whether or not you can use that asphalt or system, because then it might clash with kind of cheesy with the old brick. So, you've got to look at everything, I think lining it, or somehow maybe just a recorder, some reference to the past would be nice. So, we'll say we'll count up, see what we can take from that.
Well, but again, that's got to be part of the bid process.
Oh, yeah.
I decided after we've done this, it's got to be part of the bid process.
Okay, I think that we'll move on then, if the trustees have anything more for the comments. We'll move on to the citizens' comments on agenda items. Remember that you are welcome to come up to the microphone and the podium. I may speak on agenda items only, and you have four minutes. So, is there anyone present who would like to speak to agenda items? Not this evening, okay. The next thing that we want to look at is the approval of minutes for April eighth, twenty nineteen. May I have a motion to? Okay. That motion passed unanimously. All those in favor? Okay. Very, very good. Now, we'll move to the end of the consent calendar. We have the, no? Well, isn't the, isn't the, no, not the, no, the proclamation? Isn't it in the, it's in the consent? It is, yeah, number four's part of the consent calendar, I think.
Can I ask for a meeting of that, so it's in the record? That'd be great.
The proclamation?
Yeah. She agrees.
All right, let's see. I just thought we're going to adopt a resolution proclaiming this year, twenty nineteen, as the year of celebration of the village sesquicentennial, one hundred and fifty years of the founding of Garden City, and the centennial of the Incorporated Village of Garden City, to be read into the minutes. And I ask that the entire board of trustees stand with me, as I read our proclamation, which will be framed and hung in this village hall. So, we could draw this in our? Yes, little three. So, this is our proclamation. Whereas, the village of Garden City was founded by Alexander T. Stewart on September thirteenth, eighteen sixty-nine, and whereas on the fifteenth day of May, nineteen nineteen, a declaration of community policy was adopted by property owners, which is known today as the community agreement, to establish a fair, representative, non-political form of government, which continues to successfully serve the village today, and whereas articles of incorporation for the village of Garden City were filed on September thirtieth, nineteen nineteen, and whereas the year of twenty nineteen marks the one hundred fiftieth anniversary of the founding, and the one hundredth anniversary of the community agreement, and the incorporation of the village, and whereas in this centennial year of the founding of the village of Garden City, is desirous of the village to celebrate both the sesquicentennial of the founding of Garden City, eighteen sixty-nine to twenty nineteen, and the centennial of the Incorporated Village of Garden City, nineteen nineteen to twenty nineteen. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the board of trustees of the Incorporated Village of Garden City, on behalf of the residents of our community, do hereby proclaim the year twenty nineteen as a year of celebration for the Garden City Centennial and Sesquicentennial. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread in full upon the minutes of this meeting, and that an appropriate signed copy thereof be framed and displayed at village hall. Now, therefore, as mayor of the village of Garden City, I set my signature upon this resolution. So, this is us, our year of celebration. And so we have, should we, should we all chair round, and so that we can, we can be in good picture?
Trish, what way can we get it framed, if it makes sense?
Oh, no, I think that we can do. So, I'm doing it right now?
Can I move the second house?
Yes, very good, and a second?
Sorry.
Trustee, between those seconds, all in favor? By all opposed? The motion passed unanimously. At this point in the agenda, the board will engage in a brief discussion about plans for parking in Field Seven-Nine. Commissioner, oh, Seven-N, I'm sorry. Commissioner Jackson, do you have an update? Do you have an update on the survey?
Yes, Mayor. Beginning of the month, we sent out questionnaires, survey questionnaires to one hundred and four residents, thirty-five were vacant, so that apparently ninety-nine total. We had, we got a total response of forty-six. Twenty-six stayed in there in favor of purchasing a permit. Nineteen said no, one denied, we didn't answer, so we couldn't say yes or no. And there was a request for two people asked for two, so that's requested twenty-six responses, yes for twenty-eight permits.
All right, do we want to kind of describe this project, so that we would know exactly what we are thinking about and debating this evening? First of all, it's a pilot, it's to be a pilot, and correct me if I'm wrong. The duration is one year, all right? The location of these parking spaces is west, on the west end of the lot, near Hilton Hall. We have decided that we would give permits for these spaces, or we're considering it seriously, some of us. And what was the number of exact spots that we're going to create?
There's a request for twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, all right.
Commissioner Jackson, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mayor. Of the twenty-eight though, weren't there a couple that were requesting two spots?
Two, there was forty-six that asked for permits, or for twenty-eight permits.
Well, the only thing I was going to say is, is that as this is a pilot program, I think to be fair to everyone who lives there, I don't have an, I don't think it was right for us to sit there and to give two spots to any one particular location. I think one of the things we should do is we should offer one spot per person, or per apartment, or however we want to do it, but for one person to take multiple spots, I don't know how the rest of the board feels on that favor, but I agree.
I agree, I don't know.
When we sent it out, it was really for one spot, but two people asked for two, on our turn.
I have a question. Of the twenty-six spots we've now agreed upon, is it? No, twenty-six. On the twenty-six spots we've agreed upon, does it go to, if, how do I say this? Does the resident have that spot, like if it's, if we number them one through twenty-six, does somebody always park in one, does somebody always park in two, does somebody always park out?
No.
They can park in any one of the twenty-sixths. Okay.
I would just suggest that part of this is geography, right? So, there are, to make up a number, thirty spots along that? If you have thirty, we're only giving out twenty-six permits. So, if someone comes up in four months, and wants, you don't have to change the signage, you don't have to do anything. We're only giving out twenty-six permits. I think we envision each person to have a permit to put on their car. So, it's not like the second car could use a spot, there has to be a permit on the car. So, I, we had a map up on the wall here. As we get the AP department going on this, we'll take care of that. So, again, if it works, so we just do a spot where there's, if it's thirty spaces, it works fine, and just put the sign, do we park it for residents only? And the second part was, this only works if we change the signage in the rest of the lot. Yes, we were getting.
Well, again, I think that.
No, we can't say anything.
No, no, no.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. What I'm saying, and I'm going to start to talk about, is there was a letter from the editor in the paper, and it made it sound like we were, you know, the board was in our hollowed-out volcano where we hatch all of our equal plans, and we decided, let's charge some money for some parking. That is not the case here. To your point, follow up on your point, the reason why we're doing this is to deter the illegal commuter parking that's happening in that lot, and also give the added benefit of the seventeen sixty-seven Hilton, giving them some, a pilot program to see if this sort of thing would work, you know, to their advantage as well. If we don't take care of the rest of the lot, then this is just, all just an exercise in utility.
Well, then again, I'm going to go back to what I'd mentioned before. I've worked with Commissioner Jackson in regards to this. It is a step-by-step process as you go through the lot. So, the whole purpose of what we're doing is to have the spots closest to the apartments, correct me, from role commissioner, and then also the excess spots would be the one homologous to a given. So, the bottom line is, it's kind of like in an L shape, so that this way, you're actually moving the residents who park closest to there, which takes them away from the rest of the lot. It also gives the commissioner and his offices the ability to then work on how to enforce the rest of the lot, because then it also takes those residents out of mess. Is that a good assumption, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, and when you get that cleared up, it then helps you enforce the existing laws, and see if, and then you can determine, determine if that has to be changed from there. That's what we did in Park Field Five. We changed the laws in one section, and then enforced the rest of the laws, and see how they meshed. We made a couple of minor changes to get to that point.
Right, and just to, before I'm done with this, to address what trustee Manu had mentioned. When I picked up Garden City News this week, this last week, I haven't seen the word from the publisher, and I found the title interesting, "A Money Grab," with a question mark. And I normally don't comment on articles like this, but this is really ridiculous. This is here saying, I'll highlight the, my favorite parts, "It is unfair for the village to charge two hundred and seventy-five dollars for residents." The village is trying to solve a problem of a lack of parking in the lot, but this is the wrong way to go about it, because it singles out residents in a particular area to pay fees that others don't have to. It seems like a money grab, as the letter writer comments, one person wrote a letter, and then goes on to say that there are other places where we charge, but those are primarily to serve businesses. And why don't we set aside parking in Seven-N, and make them either free or a nominal amount? I take offense to the money grab. This is what residents see when they see this word from the publisher. Everyone has a right to say what they want to say, but this is actually absolutely ridiculous. So, let's go with numbers. So, if we have twenty-five spots, which is that our bar is going on, and two hundred and seventy-five dollars a spot, that's six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars a year. That's on a budget of six million, or, I'm sorry, sixty-three million, five hundred thousand. Think about that. Six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars on a sixty-three million dollar budget. And this is a money grab. Two hundred and seventy-five dollars a year for a permit, which gives the resident an opportunity to park their car in any one of the twenty-five, twenty-six spots. And they can park in any one of them, they live there. Two hundred and seventy-five dollars a year, that's seventy-five cents a day. That's five dollars and twenty-nine cents a week. That's twenty-three dollars a month, to be able to have a spot that you can pull into and not worry about the rest of the usage of the lot. So, to me, I would appreciate that the residents read this and realize that this is not a money grab. This is an attempt for us to work, to where we recognize the needs of the people who live there, and we're trying to go about this in a step-by-step way, to make this more beneficial to the residents, to make this more beneficial to the businesses who have customers who come there, and for the usage of the lot. I just wanted to clear that.
I would, I would offer, very well said, very well said.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Trustee Don, just on your question too, there's twenty spots against the building, and then there's, just to the south, on the tree left end, there's seven separate, and two others, which is total twenty-nine. I would not recommend, we're just installing that, and then if we need to go further, we have all the water with this long extension to the water.
Yeah, and I, I know we talked about doing steps, and I get it, I just want to make sure I understand, so how this works. We have the twenty, and the twenty-nine, whatever that is. Then we have spots where it's eight hours parking, that doesn't help us with the commuters, so it's kind of, I don't know if we can wait on that piece, we just made every bit of change.
But again, what I think, what I think would make sense, and again, I'm just going by my experience, is that first what you do is that you sit there, and you assign these spots. Now you have these residents who move their car out of innocence, you align a fire. So, now you know that these people are out of there. So, once they can do that, Kenny and his people can then sit there and look at the usage and the lay of the land, because those twenty-five, twenty-six residents are now out of the formula. It then gives them the ability to sit there and to say, okay, fine, how do we need to address this? And like I said, I worked with Kenny in the other lot, it took us two years to get it all right, because you had so many different factions, and that's what you have similar here, is that you have so many different uses of the lot. So, again, that's, I, again, I agree with you, it has to be addressed, you just can't do this and that for anything else. But I'm just saying, that's what they, am I looking at this correct, Kenny?
No, that's only the report for five.
Right.
This, this issue came up through the POAs, through the CPOA, primarily because the commuters were using the lot and driving the residents to do all sorts of things to avoid themselves getting addicted. So, yes, the pilot is one part of this, to segregate the residents over into, you know, what kind of safe area. But then we really have to change, this doesn't work unless we change the rules around the rest of the spots to drop the commuters who are there illegally out, so that there's more spots, not only for the residents at Hilton Hall, but for everyone who's at Seventh Street. That should free that whole back area up, because there's, all you got to do is go and watch when a, you know, one of the trains come in at night, there's a complete excess of, you know, thirty, forty people per train that go back there. Because at one point, just for those in the room, and Ricky, if you're ten and is down, there used to be a sign in the Garden City train station that said, "Help yourself to some free parking over at Seven-N," and there was a map, and an ad on had to get there. So, the long-haul road, we requested that they take that down, that's down now. And if we change the hours there, there should be no more, you know, illegal, non-resident commuter parking in Seven-N, which frees up needed parking for residents.
But I think we're ending up, then the people who didn't take the permit, if we change it to six hours, they'd be like, I think there was five. Then they go, I'll pony up and say I want more spots, so I. So I'm fine with that. I'm fine doing it now, or if we want to wait till September or October.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying here. Once you move your cars off the lot, then Kenny can sit there, they can develop that thing.
Yeah, well, of course, the last time we started with the, we forced it two hours on every, every street basis in Park 4-5. And then that made the people who actually, who had to adapt to the changes, they adapted, because they didn't want anymore tickets. And then we made more tweaks, but once we got, once we got where we wanted to go, it really worked. And because we had, one of people were parking across the street. Oh, they weren't across the street, they were parking on North End, and it really was circumventing the two hours on, and we kind of reinvented the wheel to stop that.
Right, but it must have taken six or seven different changes. And remember, we even tweaked one set of signs, like we changed the time by two hours?
Yes.
Because again, what your offices were able to do, they were able to monitor and see what it is. Because to your point exactly, those people that are sitting there and parking, you have to make it to such a point to where they just can't do that in eight hours. So, but you have to figure out where and how to do that.
Yes.
Would we, let's say, specially paint the 29 spots? Any ideas?
They could do that, or they could just put the sign, it's like we're doing something at the other lots with the plans.
I think sign is better.
No, I assume it'd be signed, if anyone knows.
Well, most of these areas right now are working all dirty areas, so we can put enough signs there. I don't think we need to show our jobs. We should be able to, there are these a lot of you to work with, so we should be able to put enough adequate signs.
A sign is easy, because you can just put in between these things, you have to have a permit. That's all.
And then we will double the hours.
Right, right, right. And the same thing with the, with whatever, whichever ones you have along Stewart. As far as down as you're going to go, you go from that point to the end, you have to have a permit.
Are local spots restricted with time, or is there any 24-hour spots?
There are, there's a mixture of eight hours and there's a mixture of eight hours and all-day walking. There's wild walking. Right now you have wild walking, and hour walking, and all-day walking.
The current village code calls for sticker parking in three different lots, Fair Court, 5, and 6, as I recall. In each case, the village code by local law says that there shall be no parking in those lots between the hours of 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM, excepting Sundays, unless you display a sticker or permit. Is the board contemplating that arrangement, though not for the entire lot, but for the segmented section? So from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, excepting Sundays?
It goes well.
In those restricted area spots?
Yeah.
Very good job. Because if the board goes forward.
Well, you want to do it seven days. No, no, but you want, no, but you want to do it, no, it is seven days, but it is 24 hours.
No, he said except Sundays.
Yes, the current code for all three lots is identical, and that you must have a sticker to park between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM, excepting Sunday.
Right, we want to make it all day, every day.
That's, that's a discretion of the board, but should the board go forward with this, I'm anticipating that you will need me to draft a local law. I'm just trying to determine what hours you want to be put in. The other three lots are identical, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, excepting Sundays. Do you want the same or something different?
If you basically came for this spot, you should have the spot?
All the time. Yeah, they should have the spot all the time. It has to be ever than the other lots. This is where they, they live there, they should have the ability to park.
The other lots, correctly was pointed out, are restricted for sticker parking for persons who aren't regularly employed in those buildings. In this case, it will be residents.
Yes, residents.
But there's also empty parking for residents that won't anticipate this pilot.
That's kind of the issue.
Well, that's where you're going to have to balance it all.
You have to balance the balance.
That's what Kenny wore down. Have you seen this before?
We'll be talking about it in September.
I know it's him.
I would take the motion and the council prepare a provision to the code to allow for parking these 29.
Six.
29 spots designated, 24 hours a day, 7 days, only permit only for residents of.
How many spots do we do in 20 minutes?
So is that, it said, "Trustee Don," moves the motion.
Does the, bear with me, does the motion, does the motion include, for normal local law process, you would designate a day for a public hearing on a proposed local law and simultaneously directly address?
Yes.
So typically, that's at the next board meeting. Very good. Then the motion, as I understand it, is to set a public hearing at the next board and trustee's meeting on a proposal of law to provide for sticker restricted parking in Lot 7N and spaces to be designated by the police department, numbering in the total of 26 spots for residents, 29 spots for resident parking.
$75 a year.
Can I have a second?
That's why you pay the big bucks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Yes. This time, we will entertain our usual citizens' comments on any topic.
The fireworks for the centennial celebration, was the Long Island Railroad informed, or do they need to be informed?
I believe we took all of the precautions. Mr. John?
Well, the fireworks company is taking care of everything.
Everything.
It was my understanding, when the building records were being scanned, when that project was going to be completed, the original records were going to be offered to the homeowner if they wanted?
I recall that.
Certainly something we thought about, I mean, officially.
Some people would like to have them, yeah.
Yes, because I heard that they were going to be disposed of, I think.
No, we didn't say we would dispose of them. I think it's a work in progress. We would obviously include the public, and we can discuss it.
Let me ask you a question. Could, how much of a cost would it be to return, as Mr. Alardi suggests, the original documents to the homeowners, if the homeowner wants them? Would that be a problem?
Well, the owners would come and get them.
I understand, understood, but somebody would have to go through boxes and pull it out. How much of a problem, how much of, would that be?
You have to probably do this form, which is 28, so you make them fill out the form, and we'll get, one of you can get the actual folder, where we call the resident.
Okay, so we could just set up a process, right? If you want it, let us know.
We'd come up with a form list.
We'll have it ready a month or three months.
That would be probably about 23,000 folders, so it's a lot of folders to go out.
Yeah, it's definitely a big one. But there is great stuff that they're putting together.
Yeah, I, I.
They may be storing the documents.
I realize, because that'd be labor-intensive, but I think with all the time and money and effort and everything we sent to give everyone an opportunity to choose, it's their home records. I mean, I know that I would like to have them in my home, so. Absolutely, and then in that case, I would probably say, let the residents fill out the form request, and then now, we can incur the files and, and. And Ralph, maybe we can get a couple more interns for the project.
And then are we, are we planning on destroying the?
No, because we have a focus, because we have a timeframe.
Right, no. If you want them, let us know. Here's the form.
And we'll do our best to get it to you within a reasonable period.
Tell me when it's ready, and come pick us up.
Can I ask a question? Right now there's boxes.
Not make it all, open-ended, let's set a limit to what you, when you do this.
Yeah.
Make it a year, make it six months.
Yeah, I was going to ask, are we, is there a terminus for us where we throw these things out, we have them destroyed? So what's that date? We don't, we should really talk about it, because we have like boxes stashed in different locations and all this stuff, and we just went through, paid the money to, to get it digitally recorded. If we go through this process of offering it back to the residents, I would say at some point, we should say, okay, let's cut the, now, like, throw them out.
I think of all the money you're saving, now, how do you show them?
Yeah. Like I said, I expected not to find much of anything about my house. There were all the original blue, blueprints from renovation in the 20s. It's great stuff.
I think there's some historical documents, there are things in there that we would want to save.
Yeah, let's just simply, let's just figure out a way to set up a process, and again, like I said, you know what, I know it's going to be labor-intensive, but bottom line is, I think that if we give everyone who has an interest for that, I'm sure we can probably find a vast majority of people with that, so.
We have the historical society, right?
You can step the tail at this, and this.
Definitely, Chuck.
Maybe we should put something on a website about that.
Yeah. Have to figure it out.
A comment on the conversation regarding the parking at 7N. It's been mentioned several times, that illegal commuter parking. I don't think what's going on now is illegal. It's something that we're allowing, that we don't want to allow, but I don't think it's been illegal.
It is illegal because they're staying longer than the posted timeframe. So yeah, the problem has been, and just because this was a CPOA issue, and we talked about it for a long time. The issue is that even the posted hours, they're coming, they're showing up, like at whatever, 6:00 in the morning, parking, they're not coming back until 6:00 at night. And there, there's some, you're getting ticketed, but also lots of residents get caught up in the ticketing process too. So this was an effort to, to, to curb that. That's why I call it illegal. It's really the, it's the all-day commuters we're going after. It's not the, you know, someone taking too long at Keith. This is, this is.
Okay, and the last idea, I mean, it was pretty disappointing, and I'm sure you're all disappointed, hearing on the Comfort Station at St. Paul's. It was discussed here many times over the past couple of years about how we're going to do things right, we're going to spend more money, and, you know, we didn't want to see six-by-six inch tiles. I don't know what size tile is in there now, but I'm hearing we want larger tile. But it's pretty disappointing to get to the end of the project, and I think it was said at the last meeting, that it would be ready in about a week. And now we're at a point where the place has to basically be gutted and rebuilt, so it was disappointing to hear.
Absolutely. It is north of.
Anyone else? Yes.
George Salem, 24 St. Paul's Place. I want to comment about the centennial celebration. The residents on St. Paul's Place and Hampton Road have unprotected backyards. Some of them have fences, some of them are wide open. During that festival, I wonder if there'd be some way to create privacy, some kind of roping off of, protect people from going in our backyard, some of that kind of thing.
We'll take a look at that and try to, I don't know what the outcome would be, but try to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Salem, do they do that during the soccer tournaments?
No.
Okay, so during the soccer tournaments, where we have thousands and thousands of families and kids, and everybody else, may not come into your.
I assume it's going to be much bigger than soccer tournaments. You can have thousands and thousands of people in the field. They come, they sit against the fence, and they picnic. They don't come into our property, but I just think it's a matter of some privacy. They don't come.
Well, there's multiple events there. There's sports tournaments that have thousands of people, soccer tournaments, and it's a lot.
Just to mention, will you monitor, will you keep a list there?
Yes, yes. In fact, Commissioner Jackson and I have a conference on that in a month, and we have a group of people in the village staff with a certain expertise that's relevant, and we're going to, you know, come together next week and plot out the exact layout of the fields, and we are taking a lot of precaution.
What's the parking situation going to be on that day?
I, I think that, Commissioner, would you want to speak to that for a moment?
We're going to have to discuss that, but we're probably going to do it like we do with the large tournaments, you know, World Pop Fairies to be where the park, and I gotta see the layout where all the, all the events are going to be placed, and then we'll work on that. But we'll probably have the World Pop Fairies and Parkman, you know, all the general areas, and see what else we have to do to get more spaces.
I believe these school systems, I guess you have the middle school parking field as well. That was part of the agreement with that.
There were a lot of people, you know, first of all, that's Memorial Day weekend, and a lot of people leave the village and travel. And also, there's a lot of people in the village that could just walk there.
And we'll have crossing people, if we use alternate spots, we will try to place people at locations where they can cross them.
If you park in 7N, then we'll, yeah.
It can't be there all day.
The people mentioned, there's other venues where we have the strip hall, just like the, you know, the turkey trot, it's, you know, it's a couple hours. It's like 4:00 to 9:00 o'clock on a Saturday night.
And like the turkey trot, a lot of people will park at the railroad, and walk down, a lot of people won't place.
People park along North Avenue, all those streets. It's going to be, on some level, what it's going to be.
We put up a sign on our, in our driveways, $10 for the day.
Oh, what a thought.
I have a question for Mr. Salem. Council would be, is that a bond offering, and on what, what condition, on what conditions is a referendum required to issue a bond?
Each of the four resolutions, which were drafted by the village's special bond council, recite that they are subject to permissive referendums.
What's, what's a permissive referendum?
Well, there is a process in the law whereby citizens are free to petition for a referendum, and if the requirements of petition in law are met, a referendum on those bonds is held.
I was thinking more about funding St. Paul's. The numbers turn around, a $50 million bond might be required. And what would, how would a referendum apply to that?
Where do you get a $50 million bond?
Whatever it is, 10, 20, 30, 50, whatever. Is the referendum of the people required before that bond can be issued?
No.
So under no circumstances, I mean, you just said a minute ago.
Yeah, you'd have to consult with your own council, but what I think I said a minute ago is that the four bonds are subject to permissive referendum, they so recite. You later asked whether it was required to have a referendum, and the answer is no. They are permissive referendums, they are not required referendums.
Okay. Let me just clarify then. If there was a bond offering planned to fund the St. Paul's project, what's, how's the permissive referendum work? Does the people get to speak on that?
I appreciate your inquiry, but my role is to provide legal advice to the village board, not to individual citizens. I don't mean to be as courteous in any way, but I'm hard-pressed to give you legal advice individually as to what would have to be done in order to have a referendum. My role is to counsel the board in connection with their legal questions. So I apologize, but it's simply not my role to respond to that question, and bless the board so directly.
Okay. The newspaper carried stories about March 28, board meeting, that they adopted a 1 million bond resolution for St. Paul's building. Is that about to be funded or issued?
I don't know. I don't know to whom the question is directed, and I don't frankly understand the question.
Well, no, it's not to be you, it's the board.
No, I'll answer. No, what we did was we allowed us the ability to do a bond if we want to, so that if we incur these costs, which we expect to, for the architectural, so the first step, first step kind of maintenance costs, we'd be able to get those bonded, and we'd pay ourselves from operating money for the, from a bond, if we were to so do so. More like.
More like, like we do in budget time as a preventive or possible issue. We always say, oh, we, we are authorizing ourselves to go above the 2% tax gap, but we never do. It's the same kind of thing.
And to follow up on that, if you were at that meeting, you would have heard us say that that potential bond, if we had to use it, which we have right now no intention of, is for preservation and stabilization only. It is not for building or anything else. Preservation and stabilization of the building we have now. That was made abundantly clear on, at the March 28th meeting.
Okay, at the same meeting, you authorized $250,000 for professional fees?
Four minutes are up.
To expedite limited remedial and protective assistance feasibility of proposed concept plan to St. Paul's. Is that in addition to the million then?
No, the million would cover the $250,000.
Okay, then there's another $250,000.
Yes, that would be covered by a million.
So, okay, so it's not added, it's only a million? Okay. So that million was added to, and to what was already authorized on consulting fees up until that?
No, the, the $250,000 and $250,000, the million. The million is a funding mechanism, not a spend. Okay, we're going to possibly spend, I forget what the numbers were for the architect or for the construction manager. Let's assume it's $250,000. That's what we may end up spending.
Is that in addition to the consulting fees that had been authorized prior?
Yes.
For that?
Yes.
Okay, so that would make it, how much then altogether? Was it like a half a million up until then? Roughly?
Sounds right. Yes.
So it's a half a million plus a half a million altogether? Is the four minutes up or down?
All right.
Excuse me. My name is Jack Hartog and I live on Second Street. I've lived in the village about 23 years. One of my pleasures is often sitting out on the sidewalk in front of Dunkin' Donuts, enjoying the weather and watching the people come and go. And right there in front of Dunkin' Donuts, there's a parking spot or a set aside, a set back that's designated no parking. People park there all the time, they're just running in to pick up a coffee, whatever it is. And the problem with that is that I see, especially in warm weather, a lot of children that will run out into the street there. And the purpose of the set back is so that pedestrians can see drivers and drivers can see pedestrians. And there are often times where I see close calls, especially with kids. And I think that that spot needs to be reinforced, that no parking there should be reinforced. There are countless times that I've spoken to police officers that are passing by either on foot or in cars and nobody seems to be interested to, to look after that spot. Nobody seems to be interested to talk to the drivers, issue tickets, whatever. I think that two things should be done. One is, I think that the police should reinforce that concept for the safety of the people that are walking there. And two, the village might consider painting stripes or some other designation on the pavement because the signs, I understand, can be difficult for the drivers may not recognize or understand that that particular spot is designated as a no parking spot. If there were some stripes that were painted on the asphalt, that might call it to their attention. I would hate to see a child get injured because somebody doesn't see them, simply because people think, oh, I'm just gonna run it, it's my convenience, it doesn't matter. And the village isn't reinforcing that.
Commissioner, currently, I want, didn't we move the sign in that spot to make it more visible for somebody?
We'll take a look at it again and I'll make sure the enforcement is on.
Thank you for your comments.
I, I'd like to have you painting the asphalt. Paint it orange, something.
Another question?
Couldn't make it a safety door or something, rather than that?
Suzanne, down 67 Hilton Avenue. Favorite topic is 7N. And may I ask the rationale for the fee that you've attached to these proposed permits? I know you've broken it down by the minute and the week and so forth, but what is the rationale? It was a put-off for many people in our building. And, and I might say that the response to your survey is shockingly small. We did a survey in December of 2017 of our neighbors and we had a 60%, 60% return on our survey. And it was Christmas week. And your survey is somewhere between 20 and 30% of our residents. So I'd like to come back to the question of the fee. If I'm gonna mistake it, it's the highest fee and the permanent part of the village as well.
Okay, so what, what is the question?
The question is the rationale for the children's spending $100,000.
Okay, the rationale is this, is that from your building, we basically have 26 people who have said that I would prefer to pay a nominal fee so that this way I know that I can park my car in a spot closest to the building. The thought, the thought process of that is that this way, when people are parking who live there, A, it helps them have a place closest to the building, which particularly in inclement weather is helpful to them. Second point is that this way, it takes all of those 26 cars and moves them out of the daily usage of the lot. So this way, A, if there's any major events, B, people are shopping, or C, you have people, shall we say, that park there all day long and use it incorrectly in order to avoid paying a parking lot and then taking a train, it gives us an opportunity to have a better control in the lot. Now again, you may not be in favor of it, many of your residents might not, but there are 26 people who live in your parking complex that said, you know what, I'd be willing to pay that fee so this way I have the convenience of having a spot closest to me. So again, you may not agree with that, but that's the reason why. Now, as far as how we came about with that number, we discussed it back and forth with the board. It was here in the boardroom. We were discussing what, what basically made, would, would make sense. Many people on the board, several people wanted to consider having a higher, higher amount. But the bottom line is, what we did was we said, okay, this is a spot which will basically be reserved for these 26 people 365 days a year. Now, again, if you take a look at other places that have a permit in the village, they use it for business, where people are there Monday and Friday, they pay $200 a year. That's only for when they go there for work. This is not seven days a week. This is not 24 hours a day. So again, the bottom line is, the reason that I broke it down is because it is a fee where it basically means that the resident does not have to pay an exorbitant amount of money for the reservation of a space 365 days a year. So that's the answer to your question.
But I will still point out, 26 out of 105 is a very, very small representation.
Well, basically, it's 20%, it's, it's 20, it's said to 25%. And if the other people choose that they don't want to pay that, they don't have to. They can then just simply park at the lot.
It's a pilot program.
It's a pilot program, we're gonna see what happens. So what happens is, is that maybe three months from now or six months from now, we find another 20 people come to us and say, hey, sir, you know what? I'd like to do the same thing. Or we may find a year from now, half of those people don't want to do anymore. So again...
So all of us who are going to pay the fee?
You don't have to pay anything.
You can still park down there.
You can just, you're gonna still park in the lot.
I happen to answer, yes.
Oh, okay, so then you'll have to be paid...
So if I pay the fee, I'm paying for a pilot project?
No, you're paying for a reserved spot, which is closest to the building, which you'll have for a year. Whether or not that's a pilot or, or a permit, it has nothing to do with it. It wouldn't make a difference whether it's pilot or permit. You're gonna have a spot that you'll be able to park in for the year. That's the only thing that makes a difference. Whether it's permanent or, or temporary has nothing to do with what you're doing.
And I assume this is not gonna affect the handicap parking that's already there?
No.
There are seven spaces that are closest to the building.
No, no.
That's not what we're putting there.
No.
Mr. Sorum.
Kathleen Orl, Fort Maryland Avenue.
Can you speak into the mic? Thank you.
Kathleen Orl, Fort Maryland Avenue. Referring back to a question that trustee Dorni had about the Nazarova Station parking lot. We talked about that earlier this evening. May I make a suggestion that while you are contemplating repaving that, no matter how you're doing it, to take a look at those two brick walls at the entrance to the parking lot, they are not in much of cold, the best condition. And especially that one, what used to be a planter, there used to be two. The one has been gone for years.
It used to be one, six or eight.
Oh, no. I don't use that station. But thank you for considering that because it's a question we need to...
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, may I entertain the motion to adjourn? Can I have a second? All, all in favor of saying bye?